And begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Mrs. McLean, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Mrs. Egan?
Here.
Mr. Neid?
Here.
Mrs. Crane?
Here.
Mrs. McGinnis?
Here, and I'm participating from home in Clarkston.
Uh, Ms. Catalina? Mr. Hyer?
Here.
Mrs. Horst?
Here. Uh, Mrs. Catalina sends her regrets she had a prior work commitment this evening and could not be with us. This meeting is a meeting of the Board of Education in public and is not, or to conduct the school district's business and is not to be considered a public community hearing. There is a time for public participation during the meeting as indicated in Agenda Items Three and Nine. Item Two is Approval of the Consent Agenda. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approves the consent agenda as presented.
Support.
Are there any questions or discussion on the consent agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Item Three is Citizens Request to Address the Board. You are given two opportunities to address the board. Under Item Three Point One, you can request to address the board about any topic that's on tonight's agenda, and Mrs. McLean is putting that agenda on the screen for you to see if you're joining us virtually tonight. And under Item Nine, you're welcome to address the board on any topic. Uh, when asking questions or making comments, please state your name and then direct your comments to Mrs. Kelly Horst, President, Clarkston Board of Education. And so if you're joining virtually, I'll give you just a minute to let us know if you wish to address the board on any topic that's on tonight's agenda. And so please remember that our process for doing this hasn't changed. You just need to go click on the Participants button at the bottom of your screen and click the Raise Hand feature if you wish to address us on any topic that's on tonight's agenda. And how exciting, we have one audience member with us here in the boardroom. Welcome. And I am not seeing anyone at this time that wishes to address us on anything that's on tonight's agenda. Obviously, remember, we will have another opportunity for you to address us when we get to Item Nine. So we will continue on with our agenda. Item Four is Superintendent Update. Dr. Ryan.
Thank you, President Horst. Uh, got some good news looking at, starting with our students. And I think it's important throughout any school year not to forget what we're about here in Clarkston, which is about our students, educating them, supporting them, supporting all of them, and honoring and being able to celebrate when we see excellence. And we see a lot of excellence from day to day going on in our classrooms. And I want to give a shout out to all of our students, K-12, pre-K, doing what they can to kind of make this time as worthy as possible. They're doing an amazing job collectively, and their teachers are too, as supporting them across the board. You know, I couldn't, I couldn't say enough what I see. And a couple little high points. Uh, on the sporting side, we have Ashton Anderson, who is our new state champion wrestling, and I forget his weight class off. I will get that to you guys on that. Um, performed especially on a very difficult season to be able to come through and, uh, really put up to be state champion, represent Clarkston. I was so proud of him and the team overall. And our Destination Imagination team. So I want to, took some quick notes to make sure I had it. Uh, but, uh, our Clarkston Middle School team took second place in their challenge at the virtual state level Destination Tournament this couple of weekends ago. Uh, they took second place in the overall challenge and first place in the instant challenge portion of the tournament for their age. Uh, this qualifies them for the global finals, uh, this summer. So we're proud to see, not only in sports, but in academics and creativity. We're seeing, uh, Clarkston students express what they can do out there, outside the walls and in borders of Clarkston. So can't be prouder. Additionally, looking at, uh, from my update on Friday, kind of transitioning and looking at where Clarkston schools is with respect to COVID. Um, looking at my colleagues across the county, uh, from Friday to Monday, I should be able to share with our community that, uh, twenty-six out of twenty-eight school districts in spirit or in direct, uh, action are following suit with Clarkston in terms of looking at the big picture of monitoring, as the governor has asked us, our local conditions to, to decide whether we want to feel like we need to shut down our high schools for a couple of weeks. And, uh, to me, although I am abdicating for our state, looking at how it places across the country, is definitely a massive increase comparatively out there, needs a unified strategy. Uh, but to lean just on schools as opposed to schools and restaurants, bars, casinos, bowling alleys, movie theaters, uh, I don't see that as your superintendent for our community as a unified strategy still at this point. Uh, therefore, I default to kind of examining that the COVID rates that we have within our community and how it's impacting our school. And clearly, looking at the, uh, rate of a hundred and twenty-five per ten thousand of our residents is a concerning number out there in the community. And I feel like that represents kind of a surge that we saw in the fall and that could potentially go higher. Uh, the difference now is that we've learned significant amount, the, the course of the virus in communities. And we know that schools following correct protocols can mitigate a lot of the effects as COVID rates go increasing in the community. And I believe that in conjunction with our staff being vaccinated right now and some of the other elements, that we need to look at, uh, the path of COVID in our school buildings, in our classrooms. And although we have been quarantining a large number of students overall in the hundreds over the last several weeks, uh, we have not seen the transmission within our buildings, thank God. Right now, we're on the scope of roughly ten cases that have had origin of probable link to Clarkston Community Schools from staff and students being in our classrooms. And if you look at Oakland County as a whole over just the last two weeks, they've had over eleven thousand individuals become positive. So to make a conjecture or link that Clarkston Schools or other schools are the major link right now in the COVID spread within our county, I don't believe the data supports that. Further, last night, I had upwards of eight hundred of our students tested as part of our athletics testing program, which will be done weekly. Out of the eight hundred-plus students that were tested, we had two, two students that came back positive out of that sample size. That's important for two, two really important distinctions. This is in addition to the information we shared this past Friday, is that you're looking at a subset of individuals. First of all, eight hundred students represents a sizable sample size of our overall student population. It's cross-section between middle school, junior high, and high school students, all different neighborhoods across Clarkston. And it's also a group that self-selects and is fairly mobile as a group. They get out, they're in school longer, they're exchanging in closer proximity to other students, and they tend to hang out with other groups of students that are within their athletic teams outside of school, which in my mind puts them potentially at risk. I do not, not deny the national, um, link in data, and I can read and absorb information to say that athletics has been linked to many of the potential, um, spreading agents that have been linked in communities and schools across the country and in Michigan. But I feel like I have to use the direct empirical data that I can collect on Clarkston. And that's what I keep coming back to, that to me, it's incredibly important detail that we had two, only two. And of those, they both are submitting to a PCR, kind of a more stringent test, because the tests that we give all those students generally don't air negative, but sometimes on a, in a fairly sizable number, they give false positive results. So potentially, we could have zero, um, by Tuesday or Wednesday. And I think that's an important piece for our community to be able to understand and absorb as part of the overall picture. I think our community also needs to hear that this is, has to be, will continue to be accorded, an effort that Clarkston will link ourselves to the rest of Michigan, but we'll do it our way. And we'll monitor as if we see rates of any sizable portion of transmission within our buildings or in our classrooms, we will take the necessary steps, you'll get my recommendations, to shut down those buildings on a temporary basis, to do distance or hybrid learning, depending on what, what awards, but not until I see the specific, uh, evidence that shows that it's transmitting within our hallways. At the same time, I'm hopeful that our local health departments, which are fully capable and have been empowered to make decisions to shut down portions of our economy and our health, and other systems that could help support and control COVID, that that in conjunction with the increased vaccinations, which right now, last time I checked, is I believe that roughly forty percent of Michiganders as of today have had at least one shot, and I believe that twenty-five percent of our state is fully vaccinated right now, two shots. Looking at that as kind of hope over the next couple of weeks as we go towards June. We have six weeks and four days left within our school year, not that I'm counting specifically, uh, but I'm monitoring every one of those days between now and then to get us across the finish line. So we're not being reckless, we're not trying to make a statement in Clarkston in terms of our actions, but we will represent our community, and I believe I have universal support from our Board of Education, and that we're going to keep pushing forward. And it's on the support of all the staff that works in Clarkston Schools. They are doing a tremendous job. Every single office and classroom in this school district has teachers and secretaries and administrative support personnel that are working literally some kind of times as late as ten o'clock at night to make sure that the proper contact tracing and everything is done exactly by the books in Clarkston as we go through that. It's a testament, you see the, the proof in the pudding in terms of our, our success in being able to at least control COVID right now within our school buildings. So I want to again salute the staff members, everybody that affiliate with Clarkston Schools is helping us make this a go, because it is taking a Herculean effort right now by everybody involved. And they're all doing it for the one single reason, that they care about the kids of this community. They want them to have a safe, they want to have a solid experience, they know what has been lost, they bring it every day, and they want to make it so that we can continue on in a way best by them and for our community as a whole. So President Horst, sorry for my little bit long-winded update, but as of Friday at ten a.m., I have a lot, had a lot to say and collect and wanted to make sure that I got it all right. So, thank you.
Thank you so much, Dr. Ryan. Uh, trustees, is, are there any questions or reactions, uh, from the board for Dr. Ryan? Okay, we'll move on. Uh, Item Five is Presentation Items. We have no presentation items tonight. Item Six are Action Items, and we have several. Six Point One is Approval of the Personnel Changes. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approves the personnel changes as listed on the attached sheets. Support.
Are there any questions or discussion on the personnel changes? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Item Six Point Two is Approval of Superintendent Evaluation. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approves the superintendent evaluation documents as presented.
Support.
Uh, and just to give a quick recap, um, we are required by law to evaluate our superintendent on an annual basis, although that evaluation was, uh, suspended last year by the state due to the pandemic. We met March twenty-second in closed session, uh, at Dr. Ryan's request, as is his right to request, to evaluate him on three components that are required by the school code, professional practice, student growth, and progress toward district-wide goals. And before I open that, uh, up for any just comments or discussion and a vote from the board, I will review very quickly the scores for, um, the categories and components therein. Uh, under the component of professional practice, we have several categories here. Governance and Board Relations was a three-point-seven-five out of four. Community Relations, a three-point-seven-five. Staff Relations, a four. Business and Finance, a three-point-five. Instructional Leadership, a three-point-eight-five. For a category weighted score of three-point-seven-six. Student Growth was a three. And Progress Toward District-Wide Goals was a four. All of these, um, were developed, um, based on our discussion and the rubric that we follow, uh, according to the Michigan Association of School Boards, which is one of the tools that is approved by the state and on which we are all trained to use. And so the weighted score based on those three components overall is a three-point-four-eight, or an eighty-seven percent, which according to the rubric, uh, yields a final, um, rating of effective. Are there any other questions or comments from the board before we vote to accept to the motion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Item Six Point Three is Approval of the Firewall Purchase. May I have a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approves the amount of two-hundred-fourteen thousand, two-hundred-forty dollars to Delta Networks to upgrade the district's firewalls.
Support.
Any questions or discussion from the board? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? The motion carries. Item Six Point Four is Approval of the Pool Filtration System Bid. May I have a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approves the pool filtration system at Clarkston High School to Aquatic Source LLC in the amount of three-hundred-fifty-seven thousand, nine-hundred-fifty dollars and a contingency in the amount of twenty-nine thousand, eight-hundred-fifty-one dollars for a total recommendation of three-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand, eight-hundred-one dollars.
Support.
Are there any questions or discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? The motion carries. Item Six Point Five is Approval of Construction Bid Package. May I have a motion, please?
I move the Board of Education approves the construction contracts listed in Bid Package Ten for projects at the administration building, Clarkston Junior High and Clarkston High School in the amount of six-hundred-seventy-four thousand, three-fifty-one, and also a contingency and allowances in the amount of eighty-seven thousand, twenty-four dollars for a total recommendation of seven-hundred-sixty-one thousand, three-hundred-seventy-five dollars as presented.
Support.
Any questions or discussion from the board? And I know Mrs. McGinnis had shared a question, board members, I don't know if you had a chance to see the result. Um, she had just asked a question about priorities. Given that we're kind of coming to the end of our 2016 bond and, and now we're getting into the end of our, of our spending. So I know that was, uh, shared back with us kind of late in the afternoon, and Mr. Goodman is here. So I don't know if, if, uh, you know, if you had any questions about that document, Mrs. McGinnis, and that document was shared back with you late in the afternoon.
President Horst, I don't have any questions. I really appreciate the promptness that Mr. West was able to give me that information. It did answer my question. Um, I look forward to opportunities for us to spend that down so that we can do good things for our district and our students with that residual money.
Thank you. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Item Six Point Six is Approval of Furnishings for Various Buildings and Apartments. As itemized. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approves furniture purchases to the following vendors as presented. KI, twenty thousand, three-hundred-and-ninety-five dollars and ninety-eight cents. Great Lakes Furniture Supply, eighty-six thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars and nineteen cents. Custer, sixty-eight thousand, nine-hundred-and-twenty-eight dollars and thirty-four cents. Interior Environments, one-hundred-and-thirty-nine thousand, four-hundred-and-twenty-two and thirty-eight cents. Aria, twenty-nine thousand, seven-hundred-and-fifty-eight dollars and twenty-five cents for a grand total of three-hundred-and-forty-four thousand, six-hundred-and-fifty-seven dollars and fourteen cents as presented.
Support.
Any questions or discussion from the board? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries. Item Six Point Seven is Approval of the Chartwell's Contract Renewal. May I have a motion, please?
I move that the Board of Education approves the continuation of our contract with Chartwell for the 2021-22 school year as presented.
Support.
Any questions or discussion from the board?
President Horst?
Mr. Neid?
I just want to say, I think Chartwell has done an excellent job for the school district, uh, in some trying times, and certainly the food distribution was an incredible performance. I've heard nothing but good things, and I fully support the continuation of the contract.
Thank you. Seeing no other questions or comments, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? That motion carries. Thank you very much. Trustees, Item Seven is Report Items, and Seven Point One is our Monthly Finance Report. Thank you, Ms. Rogers, for coming to the podium and walking us through an overview of our February financials.
Presenting tonight is the February two thousand twenty, twenty-one financial update. Um, no surprises, we're doing, uh, we're right on schedule. This is, currently still has the original budget in. Next month, when I bring the March, it will have the amended budget that you approved on March eighth. Our February twenty-eighth fund equity showed us at about ten million. So, and then if you have any questions on any of the check registers or any expenditures or the fund equity graph or anything that was presented to you.
Trustees, any questions or comments for Mrs. Rogers on February?
Oh, and real quick, I was gonna, the, uh, federal funding for moving forward is getting, well, what we have now and what's coming up is getting quite extensive. We have like three different, we got an S R one, S R two, S R three, and then we've got an equalization. So I wanted to bring that to you in an, in an upcoming board meeting. I will be, be coming to a presentation with you, maybe the next one, on, um, all those buckets and where we're at and what we've spent this year and how, what we've got for next year.
Great. I think that'll be very, very helpful. I think especially as the, you know, the legislature in the past, what handful of weeks, was spending so much time talking about their approval and how they released some of it, not all of it. And I think our community is actually starting to he, hear a little bit about that. So I think ha, having a better understanding in this room of what's actually made its way to us and what hasn't.
There is a piece that was vetoed.
What hasn't, I think maybe be the key there. I think that'll be very helpful for us to have a conversation about.
Yeah, there was a piece that the governor vetoed.
Yeah. So I think having a good understanding of, of where we stand there will be very helpful. It's a good idea. Thank you. Okay, thank you so much. Item Eight is Discussion Items. There are no discussion items this evening. Item Nine then, is time for Citizen Comments. Citizens are welcome to address the board on any topic at this point on the agenda. Let me return then to Zoom. And citizens, invite you to indicate your interest in addressing the board now, as I described earlier, by clicking on the Attendee button and then raising your hand. And we will call on you in order. And you will have two minutes each to address the board. I will give you just a moment to do that. I see one person at this time that has indicated interest in addressing the board. Oh, I see two now. Okay. Mrs. McLean, if you would like to go ahead and, um, activate that, Mrs. Radica Isaac, there's a familiar name.
Hi, good evening, Mrs. Horst and Board of Education. Thank you for the time today. Um, I just wanted to share a couple of things that, um, I just noticed that I implore the board to, um, act upon. One of the things that, um, I was doing lately was just looking at the board policy. Um, you know, as somebody who is a parent, um, of color, I was looking at the board policy to see how my students, my own children, would be impacted. And, um, I found that, um, you know, most of the time I was looking at it through the victim's eyes, that's just a natural thing for somebody of color to look at policy and, um, structures through. So I just wanted to, uh, one of the things I noticed is that it hasn't been updated since the district's, uh, moved to really being, uh, focused on diversity, inclusion, equity. And, uh, there are some policies that I really do believe need to be looked at uh, through the lens of equity and, um, diversity and justice. So I really implore the board to take a look at that, uh, and really work towards, uh, being bold in their anti-racist policies that are embedded in the board policy and really working towards that. Uh, right now, a lot of the, um, times that I have had opportunities to share stories, uh, a lot of our incidents are being accommodated for. So there isn't enough policy in there to address racist behavior and racist language that is directed to our bra, black and brown students. So again, I ask the board to take some time to study the policies that are in place through the lens of equity and really, um, being inclusive of our black and brown students. So thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. We appreciate your comments. Next, I'll call on Cornelius Godfrey. All right, Mr. Godfrey, I think we can hear you. If you'll state your name, you have two minutes to address the board.
Hi, my name is Cornelius Godfrey, and I appreciate the time, Mrs. Horst and Clarkston Community Schools Board. Um, I, similar to Mrs. Isaac, would like to speak about the district's stance in relation to cultural competence and the ability of both instructional and administrative staff uh, to properly secure the safety and well-being of students of color as well as other students who are particularly at risk in inequitable systems. Uh, I would strongly suggest that the district make a significant investment in preparing their instructional and administrative staff, uh, to be able to respond to issues relating to race, gender, uh, and sexual orientation, uh, and issues of discrimination. Uh, as a parent and former employee of, uh, Clarkston Community Schools, I have witnessed firsthand that there is, um, a significant lack of ability to, uh, properly respond to these things from a restorative lens. Um, and I have noticed that issues, uh, that do come up under these, uh, under these areas of equity and inclusion are often responded to as one-off rather than, uh, having a holistic and systemic response. Uh, and I believe that's partially due to a lack of preparation to employ restorative practices, but it's also, uh, due to a significant, uh, deficit in the area of cultural competence. And I do believe a significant level of training is necessary, uh, if we are to ensure, uh, the whole child well-being and safety of our black and brown students specifically. Um, I know that opportunities exist within the county to advance in this area. Opportunities exist at the, um, graduate level, uh, to gain credentials in this area. Uh, but I don't know that there is an impetus, uh, from the board or from, uh, central office uh, to pursue these opportunities so that those students who are most at risk of harm uh, can be made safe and can have assured, uh, their, uh, safety in those learning environments where instructional administrative staff, uh, are responsible for that. So I, uh, again, highly recommend and strongly encourage, uh, central office to make that a priority for instructional administrative staff.
Thank you, Mr. Godfrey. Thank you for your comments tonight. At this time, I see no other citizens. Oh, sir. Please, if you would like to come up and, um, it's, it's just so nice to have people back in the boardroom. I'm sorry, I did not look up. But if you'll, um, state your name, please.
My name's, uh, Sage Isaac.
And you'll have two minutes to address the board. Thank you.
President Horst, thank you. Um, I'm just here, uh, gonna piggyback on some of the things that were already said. Uh, I want to preface this first by saying, uh, I've lived in Clarkston for over twenty years. I grew up in this area, I went to Waterford Schools, and I love this area. My kids have done exceptionally well. Uh, I love the teachers, we love the administration, you know, we're friends with a lot of these people, and they're great people. Um, that being said, and my kids have never had an issue, so I want to say that right off the bat. Um, but we've had friends that have, you know, started to come up and are having their own issues with their children and how they're being treated. And I know that Clarkston is a place that's inclusive and wants to do better. And that's the only reason I showed up today, because I wanted to make sure that I got to, you know, advocate for these people. Because growing up, I also went through a lot of these issues. My parents are from a different country, immigrated here. Their response to me was always, just beat them in the classroom. Don't worry about what's said to you, it doesn't matter. That is, you know, what we tried to do, but it wasn't always easy. And I think now in society, the way things are, it really affects the emotional well-being of a child. So I just want to ask the board to, again, look at some of the policies. Um, and just really, like, like I said, I would, I would not move anywhere else. I love Clarkston. I really do. And, um, but there are things that need to, to be evaluated and, you know, changed. So, thank you.
Thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for your comments.
Hi, my name is Jason Isaac. I too want to speak to the board, I want to say thank you as well to the community here, the board, our teachers. We're fortunate to, to live in a place where we have such strong leadership. And I, I do think that there's some areas where we could provide better leadership. We are an affluent community. Specifically, recently, I've been exposed to a couple incidents where I really didn't feel like the response of the, the staff was necessarily as, I guess, as, as good as it could have been with, with some incidents. I, I don't want to get into too many details about that, I guess, but I, I was, I was actually, want to say, I was thankful how accessible people were, people were very accessible. And, you know, there was some dialogue, but I felt like the response in some situations was lacking. Specifically, I would say one situation where there was clearly some hate or bullying involved. I was disappointed to know that there was not a response that really included getting in touch with the parents and communicating. Like I said, the staff's been very accessible, especially to folks like myself who are, who will, who will communicate and, and talk. But I think, I think in terms of when, when there are issues, you know, getting parents involved and, and showing what we're doing as a, as a school board or as a community, as a school in response to those situations, that seems to be lacking a little bit. So sorry if I've taken a little bit too much time there, but.
You're good.
Yeah, I, I would really like to see and understand how we can de-escalate situations. Maybe that is with more holistic training. I, I don't know the answer to that, but I'm hoping you guys do, so, thank you.
Thank you so much for your comments tonight. I have one more citizen who has asked to speak to the board, Brandon Abraham.
Yep, it's Brandon, I'm an ex-student, graduated in 2010 from Clarkston Schools, moved to Clarkston in sixth grade, and just kind of want to speak on the same issues that we're, that we're talking about today. Clarkston was like a great place of learning and growth for me. I think when you're a kid, there's so many things that you go through as a person of color and as a minority in Clarkston schools, you go through. That experience being, you know, under the full knowledge that you are other, let's put that in quotations, just knowing that you, there are parts of your experience that are going to be different than most of the school. And you do as much as you can to kind of, what I would say is trim the hedges or bend those hedges, as in, take the parts of your experience that are different from others and kind of make those things fit into what would be considered normal. But as you grow up, you learn there's certain things that you can't hedge, there's certain things you can't trim. Can't change the color of our skin, we can't change our families, we can't change what my parents' voice sounds like when they pick up the phones, whatever it could be. And those things, at, at the time, I, I think I was trying to be accommodating to those friends and be as accepted as I could be. So you're, you're more willing to kind of feel shame for yourself and, and bend yourself towards what other people want. And that's kind of an experience that, that happens, I think, with a lot of minorities and people of color. I think Clarkston School has a wonderful staff. I had great relationships with teachers, great relationships with other students. I was part of different groups and clubs, sports and music, both. And I just feel like Clarkston is a place that has high values, and there is more we can do to address those values and to make sure that everyone not only feels safe, but feels accepted and seen. We don't want to be a, you know, I know, the schools have come a long way since when I've even been there. I still think there's more that we could do together to make sure that we're addressing issues of being educated on how to treat race, how to treat each other, and how to be accepting. These things that stick out from our hedges are not things that need to be tucked away or trimmed. They're things that we should feel celebrated in and things that actually give Clarkston a lot of value. But these are issues that have to be treated with a lot of care and a lot of sensitivity. And it has to be a lot of resource put into educating people on what it takes to be an accepting community, to be a community that sees each other. And I think that's something that we can all agree with, and in times like that we're in right now, we don't want to be a community that has an event happen or has something that escalates to a situation where we have to look back and wonder, wow, we, we knew that this was an issue, why don't we do more to deal with it? And as the younger kids come up and are going through the same experience, I just hope that they have resources. And they know that their value and their issues and honestly, some of the trauma that happens there is something that we're addressing as a community. And it's not just something that's isolated to them and their families alone. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Brandon, thank you for speaking tonight. All right, seeing no other citizens who wish to address the board. Put my agenda away, we'll move on to item ten, our information items. Our next Board of Education meeting is two weeks from tonight, Monday, April twenty-sixth. We will be back here in the boardroom in person at six o'clock, and obviously on Zoom for those who wish to attend virtually. Again, we are allowed to have citizens back here in the boardroom. And I, and I think just depending on our agenda and how many administrators we need here in the boardroom to conduct our business depends on how many citizens we are able to accommodate. So we will publish that number as we get closer to the meeting, but we certainly welcome you to come and join us here in person if you are interested in able. And item eleven is adjournment, may I have a motion, please?
I move to adjourn.
Support.
All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? There never is. The motion carries, we are adjourned. Good night, everyone, thank you so much.